Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, July 9, 2025, regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. We'll start out by calling to order and a roll call.
Commissioner Alcaraz, Commissioner Nguyen, Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner La Micah, Commissioner Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, item three is review of the agenda. If we had any items arisen after the 72-hour deadline? Okay, so nothing to add. Moving right along. Public comment: This is a time when members of the public wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside. But an item that is not on tonight's agenda can come forward, introduce themselves, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. Is there anybody who would like to talk about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Do we have anybody online? Okay. Going to close that one out and move right on to approval of the minutes from June 25. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Good? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second? We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes approved unanimously. All right, let's get to the first item of business tonight, 6A, which is Use Permit Application Number UP-2025-004. Christine Wing of Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula applicant and the Taylor and Carrie Loesch Revocable Trust property owner are requesting a use permit approval for the operation of a facility to prepare and distribute food to qualifying individuals and families, catering service, and a request for reduction to require parking at 1020 Auto Center Parkway in the Regional Commercial Zoning District. The project is categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section... I'm not going to read it all out. We'll turn it over to staff to give us our report.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Azrael, and I will be presenting. As we go back to the beginning. The way up to the other way. Thank you. And so tonight, we are here for a use permit. This is because a catering use in the Commercial Regional District, CRG, requires a minor use permit and because a reduction to required parking requires a use permit. And one use permit can cover both of those. The site is about 27,000 square feet at the corner of Del Monte Boulevard and La Salle Avenue outlined here in red. Most uses nearby are hotels. So here and here were auto uses. The project itself is to allow Meals on Wheels as a catering operation, including adding a second floor area to this building. There will need to be an allocation of city of water, and that will happen later at City Council. An architectural review would also come later. So a little bit of a snapshot of what Meals on Wheels does. They produce about 5,000 meals daily. And last year in Seaside, they fed a lot of our residents, 132,000 meals last year. This is the existing site plan. It's a bit zoomed out. There's not a lot we're going to talk about because this is all existing already, and it is not a ton is changing. Sorry, I'm trying to get my pointer to work here. I don't have a pointer. So you can see the parking. And it's going to change very slightly when we switch to the proposed site plan, where their architect was able to squeeze in an extra two parking spaces. At the top of this photograph, you'll see proposed landscape. I would point to it, but you can see it right up there. It is because some landscaping was removed without a permit, and this would replace it. And it also adds the required trash enclosure. For the proposed floor plan, we are here for the use permit. So we're taking a fairly broad view of this. It is primarily a kitchen with storage areas and distribution facilities on the first floor. At the very top of the image, you can see there was originally another component to this project, which was a meeting room. That meeting room will be for internal staff only. So it's no longer a congregate room. On the second floor, this is the floor that would be added. It is primarily offices. And we'll zoom in just a little bit so you can see it better. And this is the trash enclosure. So they did not have a trash enclosure. Change of use does require one be built. Just showing it here as well as with the loading zone. On site, there are 18 personnel. That includes kitchen staff, administrative staff, executive staff, as well as volunteers. And then there are 37 trained volunteer drivers for 37 routes. The activities at the site are front-loaded in the morning. They start at 6:00 AM. Drivers pick up meals from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Then they return containers. Use gradually tapers off during the day. For the parking reduction, we're starting with a required 28 spaces, which was for the previous use of vehicle sales, of which there were only 10 provided. This proposal adds two spaces to bring the total to 12, but requires 33 overall. And details to all of these calculations are provided in the staff report. A reduction of parking is allowed with two findings. First finding that there is non-conforming parking and that meeting the parking requirement would be unreasonable. The second is that there is quantitative information showing that there are fewer spaces needed than are otherwise required by the code. For the first finding, the site is fully developed. We looked at the site plan. They were able to squeeze two extra parking spaces out, but without removing something that already exists, there is no physical way to add more parking. For the second finding, there are 18 workers on site. And we did a calculation showing the number of workers that would be expected to drive and to carpool based on the typical seaside figures. This information all comes from the census, from the American Community Survey. And that yielded a total of 14 parking spaces for those 18 personnel, of which there were 12. However, there is an opportunity here because there is a red curb currently painted on La Salle Avenue. And you can see here, this is the current red curb. I'm going to go back in time to 2017. In 2017, there was no red curb painted on the side closest to Del Monte Boulevard. There was an application to paint it by the previous occupant, which was granted, as well as there is a bus stop. It's a little bit hard to see. But in the top left-hand corner, there is a bus stop sign. And this is in 2017. That sign is no longer there. So the possibilities are, first, to apply to TAC, the Traffic Advisory Committee, in order to remove that red curbing. In 2019, TAC found that there was no safety reason to create the curbing, but there's also no safety reason to prohibit the curbing. And it was ultimately approved at City Council. And then the bus stop is no longer present. Together, now those can create three to four parking spaces. So if we add that on to our 12 that exist, and we include the street parking spaces on a practical level rather than a code level, we have 15 to 16 parking spaces. And we still have the delivery drivers to think about. And staff looked at the delivery drivers as well as the operations of the site to say that each delivery driver does not need their own parking space because they are only there temporarily and in transit. And if it is properly timed, then they will be able to use the site in order to not cause a traffic issue for neighbors. As well, if there's any traffic issue on the site itself, then the only people who would be blocked in are the employees who are already on the site. That brings us to the conditions of approval. There are a number of conditions of approval. First, I'm going to go through a couple of them that really need some graphical representation. And then we have a number of conditions of approval that were included in the agenda packet. And there were some conditions of approval that were written after the agenda was published. And you see those there in your... We should have a packet that highlights those in red. They will also be highlighted in red on the presentation. So I'm going to start with circulation on Del Monte. Currently, the site does not have access to Del Monte. You can see here there is an apron leading to the property, but this is the neighboring property. So this is not their parcel. You'll see a little bit more detail here. And we'll zoom in. That curb cut is actually on the neighboring property. So one of the conditions of approval is to add the curb cut specifically for this property so that they can travel from one way, from Del Monte all the way through to La Salle, or from La Salle all the way to Del Monte. And this is important for the access to the trash, as well as just general good circulation. The details of this still need to be worked out because there are some complicating factors, such as... I'm going to go back to the image. If you look just to the top left of the curb cut, there are some water meters there, which would cause an issue, as well as Public Works has looked at this for us and has said that they would be uneasy having a second driveway. And they would prefer to just extend the current driveway. So all of this leaves enough uncertainty that the condition of approval is written so that if it's not feasible to do, the zoning administrator can waive the condition. Next is landscaping. In 2011, we can see that there was a nice bit of landscaping in front of this building, which was removed without a permit. That's what it looks like today, as in 2024. And so this is to conduct an architectural review to replace that landscaping. Moving through the conditions of approval, going to have a number of conditions of approval that were already in the staff report, already in the agenda. And those are going to be a little shorter because the full text is included for all of the ones that were not. So we already talked about the architectural review for restoring the landscaping and talked about the red curbing and installing the curb cut on Del Monte. And then we have this condition of approval about the meeting spaces being only used for internal staff. And it has extra text that I will leave up. I can also read it if you prefer. So moving on to condition five, designing the circulation for the waste hall to enter and exit without having to back onto a street blind to add long-term bicycle parking, which is required in code. It just wasn't shown on the plans. And water allocation, as well as pickup and drop-offs must be scheduled to stagger them. On condition nine, and 10 and 11. 12 and 13. There are a few more of these. Moving to 14 and 15. And I think we are at the last four, last two.
I think we have these written in our package as well, Eric. Did that conclude your presentation?
That does.
Okay, excellent. Let's bring it up here if we have any questions to staff before we open to the public comment process. Anything over there?
I think this is great. We may be coming into the city of Seaside. As long as it's right to me of anything with the... There's only 13 people in total. 15 employees and all, there are 13 drivers. There's only so many stops. Isn't that going to be manageable for you guys to do?
We'll get a chance to ask them in a little bit. So that's okay. So right now, let's just ask questions of staff. If we have any questions about the presentation to where we want clarification, because then there'll be a public comment. We can't ask the applicant about it.
That's...
Does it concern you?
There's so much traffic coming in and out. I see that also with the time raised, the operation, when you affect so much the teenage traffic that is there with that... Because there's that line there, whether because as you come out into Del Monte, it can get really busy right there, especially on a stretch to go into Albertson's. Right, is that what it says? Albertson's, or, you know, all that. Okay, yeah. Echo Target. That's all concerned about.
Commissioner Evans, any questions for staff? I told you, gosh, I'm sorry.
Just don't call me like that.
Whatever. All right. Commissioners?
I have a concern that's related, I think, to the one that was just mentioned. And that is, there must have been a reason, and it sounds like the reason was sightlines, to put that red parking area there. And if you take it away, that problem will return. And I'm just wondering, you know, what sort of measures are going to be taken so that people coming in and out of that parking lot will not be kind of blinded in that direction when they're trying to get onto Del Monte, which is a very busy street?
Well, I have a question related to that. Were sightlines the reason for the red? Or did, if you recall, the last user put on display all of their motorcycles out in front. Did they just paint it red because they wanted everybody to see, like, a sign, all of their motorcycles sitting out in front?
It is unclear. The records that we have indicate that the request was made from the property owner, business owner, saying that there were crashes in front. There were no reports made to police. There was no evidence of that. That was the reason for the request. And staff at TAC found that there was no safety issue. But we don't have a clear reasoning as to why it was approved.
Sure, okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Dodson?
Well, yeah. If that is, that red parking zone is removed, will, is, do the applicants plan to reserve those parking spots for people that are using their facility? Or it's on Del Monte, presumably anybody could use it, and it may not even help the parking situation for them.
Correct. I'm going to go back to a photograph. So this is on La Salle Avenue. And the area in red is the bus stop. The area to the right of that is the curb that we're talking about right now that was approved by City Council back in 2019. The side of the street this is on means that the only sightlines that would be blocked would be from a car on Del Monte turning right onto La Salle. Someone who is on La Salle would be on the opposite side of the street to these parked cars. As well, this condition of approval is written that the applicant would apply for the curb. It does not guarantee that the curb would be approved. So a lot of the details were left to, can it be approved? We don't know.
Is that all your questions? Commissioner Evans? First off, excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Two questions, just from the city standpoint. Obviously, there's a lot of room in the back where there's going to be the loading of the big trucks that are coming in with stuff. But the way this is written, they're going to try to coordinate that so that the trucks won't be there when the drivers are there or the employees are there parking. Is there any way, is there any flexibility from our standpoint to kind of dual-purpose that back area? Because there's a lot of room back there. So that's one question. The other is where we're going to require landscaping? Is there any way to turn that into parking? Or is that impossible?
I'll start with the second question first. And I think, one, that's a little bit more of a design question, whether it can fit or not. The other part is that they are already at the limit of the landscaping. So the landscaping that was removed, put them under the minimum. Bringing that landscape back brings it back to the minimum. There can always be a variance or something else applied. If those spaces can somehow be used, I think we would have to see a specific plan in order to know whether that is feasible or not. And then for using the back, the primary issue with that, I'm going to go to a site plan, would be the distance is not very long. And a car parking space is 19 feet long and nine feet wide. And currently, there's also no way to access this except from La Salle. On a practical level, I'm sure people are driving in from Del Monte and turning onto the property, but that's not their property. So it does, there are some things that can be done. Maybe there can be another parking space or two worked out. But right now, I don't think we know.
So just one follow-on. So the idea is where the parking, the 12 parking spaces are going to go, driver's going to come in off of La Salle. And they're basically going to line up behind the parked cars. So there really isn't any need for parking. Currently, at PG, they park, all the drivers park in spaces. And that's how they get their foot. But here, you're expecting them to just line up out there. Again, there's a lot of space back there.
And I think the, I think that's probably a question for the applicant or possibly for Andrew.
So in looking at this, as you can see from the site, yeah, there is a fair amount of length there. So all those parking stalls may be filled. They're going to be filled with employees. There's not going to be people coming and going, like at a retail location. So they have, the applicant has control over, full control over the operations at the site, including the people who are parking there. If we were to require parking, so they're going to have eight to 10 per, I think it's every 15 minutes, or maybe it was. At any rate, having a parking stall for each of those individuals that's only going to be used for like five minutes at a time, it just doesn't make any practical sense to try to put that many parking stalls on the site for a bunch of users that can be coordinated to come through. Now, this is something that, if it's not coordinated properly, could end up being an issue. And that's why we have a lot of conditions in the use permit, including some that were just added, to really give the city some ability to enforce it. If, for example, cars are backing up onto La Salle or onto Del Monte, that would be a problem, and that would be something that we would have to address. But both Del Monte and La Salle at that location, there's not a lot of traffic. They're two-lane roads, good visibility. Even if those parking stalls are restored at the red curb on the north side, there should still be good visibility operationally. So we don't anticipate the lack of designated parking for those drivers to be an issue. But we do have the ability to enforce in the event that it does become an issue because it's not managed properly.
And all that's great info, but what I'm asking is, up here, are the drivers coming in here, they can line up here behind all these parked cars? That therefore, we're assuming they don't need?
The specifics, I could let the applicant tell you exactly what it is they're thinking of doing.
So related to that, if I, are you done? Or do you have more? So related to that, what is, what is the site setback from the building to the property line where the parking lot is?
You mean on, I guess it'd be the east side?
From the east side of the building to the east property line, what is that distance? You mentioned that there's 19 feet of depth for a parking space. So then from, from the parking spaces to the wall or the edge of property, what do we have? The numbers are too small for us to see.
33 feet, 11 inches.
Total, including the parking spaces or beyond the parking spaces?
Beyond the parking spaces.
So if you have a 19-foot parking space, then the backup zone that should be required for that should only be about another 19 feet?
24.
It's 24?
Yes.
And 24, 33 less 24 is, what, eight feet?
Nine.
Not nine, sorry. And a parallel parking space is only nine feet wide. It's eight feet wide. So you could actually line parallel parking spaces all along the east property boundary and still have adequate backup space and create a whole host of additional parking spaces. And we could say that those parking spaces are loading only, which would facilitate what you're talking about, which is cars can queue up there, and it can be hatched yellow or whatever else. And there seems like there's more than enough space, especially if we gave them a variance. I don't know, if you're 19 feet depth for those other parking spaces, there's a zone from the front of those parking depth for those other parking spaces, there's a zone from the, the front of those parking spaces to the building, where if you have curb blocks, you actually, you can actually get some of the car out of the parking space. It just seems like we've got a lot of room there that's more than adequate to accommodate whatever their, their uses are. So that was my first question. What is our setback at the front of the building to the property line where the landscape zone is going to be?
Seventeen feet, one inch.
I'll be honest, it seems to me that, and, and it would be worth exploring, I'd give them a variance for no landscaping if they wanted more parking spaces at the front. It seems like, I mean, if you remember, what is it, Dollar, the Dollar General store, it used to be Old Outdoor World? There was a parking space with these diagonal spots that were so much smaller than anything you're proposing here. Just the observation that they used to park ATVs out there, and there was more than enough space. And I suspect, I suspect that the, the complaint that there were accidents and the request for them to paint that red was a bogus request so that they could have their merchandise on full display because they also went out without a permit and paved the whole area over so that they could display it. So my point is this, we, we have been accustomed to seeing a bunch of paving there and a bunch of vehicles parked there for the last however many years. And so I'm just wondering how staff could potentially accommodate them with parking spaces, loading zone, whatever they need. And then the other question I have is this, if they have too many vehicles, what neighbor does it impact?
Going to the overhead of the area. So this is the overhead of the area. And
So what's the property directly south?
Directly south, that is an auto repair. I'm not sure they're currently open, but it is an auto repair. It has been an auto repair for a long time. To the right and to the east is a hotel. And you can see a bunch of parking spaces off of their buildings. As far as we know, those aren't really used.
And does the asphalt between those two properties sort of blend together, or is there a boundary?
It blends together. On a practical level, we do suspect that people were parking on those parking spots next to the hotel. The, it's not technically their property. So something like a parking agreement would have to be made if they were willing.
Sure.
So that would be one, one way to use that.
So practically speaking, if there were overflow parking and somebody wasn't following the rules at Meals on Wheels, the hotel is the only one that's going to be impacted. Because I don't, there's no parking spaces really in front of the auto place that I see as being an issue. And, and here's the question I have. There are a bunch of conditions of approval in here that are extremely onerous. And we're asking a nonprofit that does really good work for our community to maintain a log of parking use for a period of one year. Really, they have better things to do at their time than to maintain a parking log. It strikes me as the most bureaucratic, overreach kind of thing that we hate government for. And I'm just asking, if, if they piss off their neighbor, their neighbor's going to complain, and then we can enforce them and give them violations for parking. But can't we have a little good faith with our nonprofit neighbor that they're going to do the right thing? And if, if they overcrowd their own parking lot, it's their own damn problem, and it's not anybody else's that we have to worry about. You see what I'm saying? I think that some of these conditions of approval are, are draconian, and they're really unnecessary because these guys are going to do the right thing with their property. And we can enforce if they are violating. I think we can do things that say, instead of any increase in the number of employees or volunteers on the site, she'll require review and approval by the planning commission. Let, let them bring 70 volunteers in if they want. And they've got to deal with the parking issues themselves. And if they can't, that's their own damn problem, right? I, I, that's, that's my thinking. And I'm just wondering why we're being so restrictive on, on somebody who we want to help in our community. So, and that's my question to staff. But obviously, you see where I'm going, and we can talk to, we'll get public comment. And if, if there's neighbors that are going, oh, no, we don't want this here. This is a bad use. We're going to hear that.
And I believe Andrew may want to answer that question.
Okay, there's a lot to unpack there. Let me, so to, to go back to a few of the things you brought up earlier as to the, whether or not that you could have the stalls lining along the edge of the park, along, basically along the eastern property line. The issue there is not that it makes it impossible to do the parking from here. It's, well, I guess it doesn't show it there. The issue is how it affects the parking for the hotel behind it and the ability to back out. I agree that formally, putting a parking stall there doesn't really work. In reality, with the loading and unloading, I do think that whether or not there's a formal parking stall there, they can make it work as long as it's coordinated, right?
If we ask them to hatch, yellow hatch lines from property boundary, which isn't even delineated right now, from property boundary in eight feet, and hatch it and just say loading zone. Keep clear loading zone.
You, you could, I'm just not sure that that's necessary. I think that, like you, like you said, giving them the ability to manage the parking on their own lot.
Okay.
You know, and just, I, I don't think it's necessary to, to crosshatch that. I think that, given their full control over not only the loading and unloading, but who's parking in which stalls? If there's people who need to come and go from parking stalls, then they can designate those, have their employees park in the ones that are going to get blocked. And say, if you're not going to be leaving between nine and 10, then park in this stall. Not putting that kind of hatching down gives them maximum flexibility in terms of managing the parking on the site.
But at the same time, if they're coming up with a really good system for their volunteers, they also might want to put arrows or something. It's like, enter here, you know, whatever, exit, you know, one way, do something like that so that, that they set up a system that really works for them, especially if we can grant them the extra driveway cut going out to Del Monte.
It's their property, so if they want to do on their own, something to help their own personal system, that doesn't mean that we have to require it as a part of the permit.
And to my own argument.
Yeah. Right, yes, yeah.
Want to make them do something they don't have to. I just want to talk about ideas.
Right. Now, as far as the number of volunteers and employees, and the reason for that is that in order to grant the parking reduction, we have to make findings. And as you, as you may remember, the amount of parking stalls that they need is, so one way to look at it is they had 28, they, they will need 33. So they need to find five parking stalls. They're providing two, so parking reduction of three. Another way to look at it is they have a requirement of 33 stalls on the site by our own math, or I'm sorry, by the, by what the code says, and they're providing 12. So they're 21 stalls short of where they should be. That, that's another way to look at it.
I guess, but what's the length of the, the property overall from north to south?
You mean the property dimension?
Property dimension from north to south on that east property line. And, and my reason for this question is if they were to hatch or mark stalls and just call them loading only or whatever, those would legally be parking spaces, even if they're just for loading and unloading, that would count towards their total, which would change their compliance.
But they would also block the stalls potentially of the, of the lot next door. And so honestly, I would have to get Public Works involved to look at it from an engineering perspective.
What you're arguing in that is that if they're blocking the stalls from next door, you're saying that the only way that the people next door at the hotel can get out of their stalls is to encroach onto the neighboring property?
If the city makes them put loading stalls down, we are giving them the right to use that area as a loading stall as opposed to not requiring them to put loading stalls down, which still gives them the ability to use it as loading, but doesn't give them a legal right to do it. So if they're using it as a loading area and someone comes out of the hotel, it's different if it's, it's a matter of who has the right, right? If there's a designated loading stall that we told them they could put in, the hotel can't make them move. But if it's just someone normally there.
Condition, could the hotel make them move if the, if the cars are on Meals on Wheels' property?
Because it's, it's, it's all a shared parking lot. It's, it's not an ideal situation by any stretch of the imagination.
If there's a property line there, Meals on Wheels could go up and just put a fence along their property line. And the hotel would have no right to say, take the fence down so my, my, my guests can back up further.
I don't know if that's true.
Do, does the hotel have an easement over the eastern edge of their property?
They could possibly go to court and seek a prescriptive easement. It's not the sort of thing that just happens.
Is there an easement?
That's what a judge would have to decide.
No, no, there, there is either an easement that's existing on title.
No, there is, there is, there is no easement on title, yeah.
So, so maybe based upon historic use and everything, they could make a claim for that. I guess, but a prescriptive easement, and that's a, that's a... Okay. But what you're saying is the city doesn't want to get into a position where you're implicated in a potential land use dispute?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, remember when South Shore boats moved in this building? And at that time, through the Auto Center, there was a roadway all the way through here. So I can't see that that hotel has any say over this because that used to be a roadway they got you to LaSalle from Broadway all the way. You could go, you could follow the Auto Center straight through. So I don't see that there's an issue here. I, I, I think it's a great idea. The building's been empty now. I, I live up the street, and I come down this road a couple of times a day. The nice thing with getting out to Del Monte, you have a stoplight to go into Lucky. You have a stoplight at Porsche. So it intermittents the traffic to allow the trucks and stuff to go by. I don't see any issues here. I don't mean to stomp anybody's feet, but I, I'm all for this project.
Okay, well, let's do that. Are we done with questions of staff? I mean, you know, fair enough. Appreciate you answering the questions, even if they're hard questions that I'm throwing your way too. Why don't we do this? The first thing we're going to do is we are going to open the podium to the applicant, applicant representative, applicant's architect, whomever wants to come up. We'll give you, say, five minutes to chat, but, or to present. But then we'd like you to stick around in the event that we have questions for you. We'll do that before we open up to the general public. Come on forward, state your name.
I'm finishing my mint. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mark Hansen, Director of Operations for Meals on Wheels. And I'm also the parking guru, so I can explain some of the parking, the logistics on.
Feel free to lower the microphone because Andrew's extremely tall.
He is tall. And Christine Wingi, I'm the President and CEO of Meals on Wheels Monterey Peninsula. I know it says county on some of these documents. Sure, some point here, but not right now. So you all know what Meals on Wheels does and what we're about. You might not know that we also go into people's homes and help. Oh, look at, well, not quite yet. It's coming up. You also might not know that, that we go into people's homes and actually make repairs so that people can stay in their homes a little bit longer, and that is fully funded by a local Hayward, Hayward Lumber Company, I should say. And, and so people that can't, can't source food for themselves, people that can't fix their homes, we help them do that. 132,000 Meals just in, 1,000 Meals just in Seaside alone this last fiscal year. We want to be your partner, and we want to be a feather in your cap. You know, this is, this, this is a great opportunity, I think, for both the city of Seaside and for us. I mean, that's a great location visibility-wise for us as well, right? And, and we want, we've worked very well. I think your planning team has done a phenomenal job with us. I'd love it if you wanted to take out all the red. That would be fabulous. We are here to work with you and with them. And Mark can certainly talk about all the, all the logistics he would like. But I, I do want to say, what we've given, what we've worked into the proposal is a skinny version of what we could be, right? So you've got 18 people there. You know, we're not, we're Meals on Wheels. We're not trying to be skinny. We're trying to feed people. So if you've got 18 people and the, the current iteration that we'd like to see in the building is about 16,000 square feet, where you're looking at, what, 900 square feet a person? That's a lot of room to move around in a kitchen and above. At some point, if you would allow us and would want that, we'd love to expand. We'd love to become more of a community center. We have Olden Meyer that we're, you know, working with now through the county and the AAA of the county. We have options to grow if you want us to, and we would love to do that. However, if you are not prepared for that at the moment or ever, we're fine with what we've got. Okay, we're, we're planning on growing and feeding more people. As you know, a lot more people are becoming elderly in this day and age, and a lot more people need our services. I think it is 34% of the whole county are food insecure at the moment. And costs for food right now in this county have risen 27% in the last, I think, three to six months. That's going to go up. Both those numbers are going to go up. And we want to, we want to meet that need. Mark.
A little bit about the, the parking.
Since there's two of them talking, we'll give them five minutes each, just, just so we don't run out of any time with them.
Hopefully, I won't, won't need to take that long.
May not need to, but I just want to make sure we don't have a little red light go on and like cut you off.
Okay. But thank you, Commissioners, first of all, for meeting with us tonight. And Commissioner Evans, you know, you were, you were a driver. I remember you, you even still got his Meals on Wheels cup. So you could verify any of this. So we currently have six spots that we work off of from nine to 10 in the morning. Okay, we have 38 employees overall with, within Meals on Wheels that all park on public streets right now. They come in at six o'clock in the morning. We have some come in at eight o'clock in the morning. But as far as our loadout during, during the day, it's from nine to 10 in the morning. We have 37 drivers, either eights or tens come in between nine and 9:15. We load them up, five minutes, they're in, they're out, they're gone. Next 15 minutes is another eight to 10. And it's kind of based on where, whether they're going to Carmel Valley, Carmel, Pacific Grove, Monterey. And that's how we, you know, shift them in and out throughout the day. They come back later in the afternoon and drop off the buckets and the coolers they do, you know, and that's variable times. So that's not any specific set time. It's usually within an hour, hour and a half period of time. So we haven't had any parking issues or traffic issues. Or accidents. Our, our delivery schedule, they know the delivery services, like US Foods and Cintas and stuff, they know that they can't come between these hours. And it's like, it was a 10 to 12, or nine to 12. They don't, they don't come and, and visit us or drop off. It's either before that or after that. So we don't have any issues with any of the purveyors interrupting any type of flow currently. You know, we're willing to adjust whatever we need to adjust to make it more efficient for us because this is a new endeavor for us as well. And what makes the most amount of sense, coming in LaSalle or coming off of Del Monte and coming around, grabbing the food at the back of the building, east side of the building, and going out LaSalle? It's just, from a standpoint of, of service to the community, you got freeway access. We have to go to Marina. We have to go over the hill. We have to go to Slayness. We have to go to the valley. It just gives us better opportunity. Yeah, I mean, you can go from Pacific Grove to Carmel Valley, but you got to go through Pacific Grove over Homewood Highway. It's just, it's very time consuming. This gives us the opportunity to give better service to the clients we need to.
So quick question. Is this replacing the Pacific Grove location?
No.
So it's an addition, but this will be the distribution center?
Correct.
Correct.
So you have a lot of offices upstairs? So there'll still be some of your executive function out of this location then?
Correct.
And then what will Pacific Grove continue to do?
That's a community center right now, and it will remain a community center. Probably our development team, our operations team, some of them will all be over there. Yeah.
We have the, the fitness classes, the yoga classes. We serve lunch every day for the congregant members, community dining, so.
Any other questions for? Yeah.
I'd invite all of you to come and enjoy a meal. We, I have tons of reviews and surveys about how good our food is. It's 18 meals, fresh meals prepared every week for every client.
Yeah, you served my dad 27, 28 years ago, so.
Thank you, and thank you for believing in us.
Appreciate it.
And staff, thank you for working with us as well, so.
Okay, so we, we do need to open this up to public comment from anybody in the general public. It can be supporters, it can be detractors, it doesn't matter. So you got three minutes. Please come forward, state your name, and share with us whatever you'd like to.
Well, good evening. My name is Paul Bruno. I serve on the board of Meals on Wheels, so the Monterey Peninsula. I joined because it was my mother's favorite charity, and now that I'm there, I'm hooked. It's unbelievable what they do. It's a, it's a definite jewel in the crown of our community. Some of you know I'm involved in construction and development. Some of you know I'm involved in construction and development and, uh, I've been very active in, in site selection. So I bring some expertise to our team and I wouldn't be recommending a site to our team if I didn't fully believe that this site would work. The logistics of getting in and out work, the parking does work. It's an under parked area. You know, you know areas that are overparked and areas that are underparked. In fact, this one's so underparked, it's, uh, tracks homeless. So I think our activities there will actually brighten the area. So I, I'm complete confident that this will work. Otherwise I would be recommending we go elsewhere. Uh, we're a long-term organization. This is an important aspect to our future growth and, and providing for this community. A lot of people are out here in this town. And, uh, I appreciate the staff working with us. The water management district has worked with us. Everybody's come on board and, uh, we appreciate that because when it's all said and done, one of these days we might be receiving those meals and thanking God that these people exist. So thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Esther Hobbs. I'm a proud seaside resident and a proud employee of Meals on Wheels. I'm here to voice my full support for the use permit that would allow Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula to open a second commercial kitchen right here in our beautiful city. I also drive by the proposed site every single day on my way to work. Right now it is an underused building, but with this project, it has the potential to be something so much more. A fully renovated, updated facility with a thoughtful, clean design with an essential purpose for our community. It will be something we can all take pride in, a space that reflects the heart of our community. I hope you'll say yes, not just for the permit, but for a more connected and beautiful seaside.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you very much for this time this evening. My name is Stephanie Schofield and I'm a proud employee of Meals on Wheels and member of our home delivered meals team. I'm here to urge you to approve this use permit for the second commercial kitchen in Seaside. Delivering healthy meals to seniors and others who are homebound or food secure is our mission. As a member of the home delivers meals team, I can speak directly to the fact that we take phone calls every single day for new clients to come on board that need our food. It's a daily venture we do. So this kitchen will help us continue to meet the needs that we can see every single day. The demand for our services has just grown tremendously in the eight months I've been employed with Meals on Wheels. Like I see it every day. And the expansion means more local jobs, more meal capacity and stronger emergency response capacity. It's a good thing for seaside and it's the right thing to do for our community. Thank you for your time.
Chairman and Commission, my name is Al Solian. I'm an architect. Our firm is, uh, does architecture, engineering and construction. And we are honored to be a part of this fabulous team, Meals on Wheels, to be a part of this community and, and the project that they're, uh, that we're proposing. In a moment, we're going to show you, uh, brief concept photos of how we plan to transform this building, which is kind of a tired building right now. You can see some of the, the metal panels are starting to come off the building. And so it's our plan to completely renovate both the exterior and the interior of this building. So when we're done, it will look something like our concept drawings. Can you, uh, switch to the, there you go. That's kind of a shot of the entry to the building, um, from, from the parking lot on, off of, this is LaSalle to your right. And one more. There you go. And that's a Del Monte, uh, elevation that, as you, you would see it from Del Monte. We're, uh, as part of the design, we're trying to lower the profile of the building and so it's a more linear looking building rather than, as now it's, it's quite a bit taller than, than we're showing in our, uh, renderings. We think this will be a fabulous project for the community. We're very excited to be a part of the team and, uh, we urge you to full support. If you have any questions about the building and the improvements, uh, we're, we're here to answer those.
Absolutely. And we're gonna, we're gonna break our normal protocol and let, let some questions be asked because you're part of the architectural team. We could have had you at the front end with the applicant.
Sure.
So we'll break our, our protocol and, and because I know we have a question.
Yeah, the only question I have is you're saying low profile, but you also said earlier in the, uh, presentation that there's a second story going in. Just curious about that.
Yeah, the, uh, the second story is where it is now. There's currently a second story in, inside the building. What we've done is lower the facade. There's about a, uh, five foot tall parapet wall that runs around the entire building and, uh, above the roof line. And we're lowering that parapet wall. And you'll see the tall area in the center of the building on Del Monte and then around on LaSalle. And on the backside of the building, those areas that project up above the horizontal line are designed to house all the mechanical equipment and, um, things that would be up on the roof. So you won't see anything from the street view.
Any other questions of the architects? Okay. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
All right. So we're still doing our public comment. Anybody else wants to come forward? Welcome to.
Oh, hello, uh, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, I'm David Foster, the Home Delivered Meals Manager at Meals on Wheels. Um, and yeah, I just want to voice my strong support for Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula's like use permit for the city. Um, I think the project brings multiple benefits, creating jobs for local people. Um, it's strengthening local infrastructure and, you know, ensures our most vulnerable like neighbors, especially our seniors get the nourishment and care they deserve. And I know that even today I was speaking to a client who lives in Seaside and he was really, um, really thankful for the call I gave him because he was, he didn't answer the door today. So we were just checking up on him and he was like, it's really great to find out that someone cares. And that like really touched me and that's kind of why I think it's so important for us to continue to grow and really help as many people as we can in this kitchen will definitely help us. So, um, yeah, I just ask for you guys to support as much as you can. And thank you so much for your time.
Not seeing anybody else stirring in the audience. So do we have anybody online who might want to raise a hand and share? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and we will bring the discussion back up to the commission. Can I start with you, Commissioner Evans? Any input, comments, thoughts? Suggestions?
I don't like things in red. We got, we got to nick some of these if we can, because this is, I just, I'm very uncomfortable with some of this onerousness. Yes.
Just, it wasn't said where the comments in red originated. So just to give you guys, um, it was originally published in the, with the black language. And after it was published, the city attorney had a chance to review the document. And so the red language is the language that the city attorney recommended that we included, be included in the use permit. Just so you understand the genesis of that.
Certainly. And I understand she recommended it. Is there a legal basis for that recommendation or is it just a preference? Because I mean, there's two distinctions. You made a point on condition number nine where the, um, the intensity of the use or the number of employees directly ties to the parking requirement relating to the permit. But some of the other things like doing a, a, a log, that, that, that doesn't maybe have the same nexus. And so that's my, would be my question is on the red, which ones are, are non-negotiables from a legal perspective or a planning perspective and which ones are, are just, you know?
So the, my only problem there is that, um,
You're not disagreeing?
I'm not an attorney, so, uh, I have my opinions as to which ones are negotiable and which ones aren't. But I'm not qualified to go on the record with saying which ones are, aren't unfortunately. I, I don't disagree with you that there probably are, there probably is a scale there, but again, I'm not qualified to make that.
Well, and that may just be something we have to decide up here and based on consequences or something. Yes. Oh, wait, I, I was going to go in. Oh, you have a question for Andrew while he's up and then I'll, we'll go in order from.
I know that, uh, for like Laguna's sake, races and stuff, they have parking out at, um, CSU MB. And then shuttle. To me, this isn't a problem if it gets to where they need that much more people. We just have a thing that they shuttle them in. They, they park offsite and then they bring them in. Cause to me, this is a good use for this building. Thank you.
I, I was not done by that. Oh, okay. Sorry. We'll go back to the beginning.
Uh, first off, I just want to say that this is a great project. I am prejudiced, obviously. But I also know what it's like to be a driver. And so I also know that we're in and out, we're, we're not taking up a parking space, blah, 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 all the things that the, the chair talked about being flexible on. I am in complete agreement. I also agree with the chair that probably not making a condition, as a driver, I'm used to pulling into my spot. Okay? So if there's nothing there, they're going to take, it's going to take a while for them to learn where they're going to go and how they're going to do it. And you probably will evolve. And that's why I was asking about the back of the building and other things. I mean, if it were me and I was in your position, I'd be looking at coming in off of Del Monte and just having them line up back there in the back and delivering out of that. Maybe that's not going to work with where the kitchen is and with the people that are bringing it out. I don't know. But if not, then on that east side, just some cross hatching or something with some arrows so that they know where to go. I don't know that you need to set up spaces because now you're going to have people, parallel parking and all sorts of stuff behind the, the employee parking. But I think there's a lot of room back there, especially with the hotel. Uh, and I think they can, they can navigate it, but just maybe helping them out at the beginning. I'm thinking of me. You would need to help me out a lot if I was readjusting from years of parking, doing it one way at Pacific Grove. So that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, my, my one and only concern on this is, is one that I think, uh, you see every day in front of In-N-Out and that is, uh, cars backing up into traffic, causing traffic situations that are not good. I don't think this is comparable to that. First of all, the street is not as nearly as heavily traveled as that in front of In-N-Out, for example. Uh, so, um, I'm feeling confident based on what I've heard that you can work it out. So safety will not be a concern at this location. And if that's the case, I'm all for it.
Through the chair. Yes, sir.
Okay, just so we all know, we did put a stipulation on In-N-Out. They're supposed to open a double lane when the traffic starts getting backing up and they're supposed to moving it through quicker. And I'm well aware, I see it too. But the planning commission did do its job when we did the permit passing through. And I see no problem with this. I, like I said, I've lived here for seventy years and I've seen that as South Shore boats when they moved from down by Monterey Wharf into that building. And they offloaded boats and trailers way bigger than any meal you're going to serve. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a done deal. The only thing that I would like to throw in is I would like thirteen and fourteen to be removed out of these, uh, out of us approving everything but thirteen and fourteen. I don't think that they should have to do this much work to show who in the heck's parking that will see that, right? The other people will say something and it'll get back to the city, but I don't think we need to have anybody with their finger on top of it.
Commissioner, it's just a friendly, um, add to your suggestion. I, I would add, um, ten and thirteen to that, but maybe we can debate that.
He said thirteen and fourteen, so we're on the same.
I'm sorry. I was going to twelve, thirteen. Thank you.
Well, and I'll get back to me. I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm good.
Commissioner?
No, I'd like to thank, um, Meals on Wheels for presenting this this evening. And I think that Seaside would be very honored and, and I think it'd be, um, a pleasure to have you guys. And, and I believe everything is really, um, like the rest of the commissioners and the chair says, um, you know, we're looking forward to this. The only thing, um, the only concern I had was the flow of traffic and Mr. Hanson, right? Mr. Mark Hanson. Mr. Mark Hanson actually kind of clarified that, you know, it's, it's almost like a flow. It's just to make it more safe and secure. You know, they're talking about boats, boats sit there, you know, we're talking about traffic, consistent traffic and stuff, which will, you know, it, it, it could be, it could be a, a problem, but I, I believe there's plenty of room there. There's plenty of spaces there. And I think that you guys can, you know, utilize it to your best. It'd be the, you know, the wisest thing to do, but I really am thankful for you guys coming and, and all you guys do for all the people here in Monterey County. Thank you.
So yeah, I'm a big fan. I, I want to see this happen. I want to see it happen as, as easily as we can for you to set up your success. It, it's interesting. We jumped through some hoops to rezone this property a while back because we were hoping for an Ace Hardware to come in here. And it's interesting how we are motivated to, to do something when there's a benefit for the city. In that case, it was the potential for sales tax. But I think the benefits for the city aren't always financial, numerical in that way. You guys provide a community service that is good. And having you in our city is a good thing. So I think that that value is, is tremendous. I think what we have to do today, and this may be a question for, for Andrew. We have to decide on how we're going to approve the application that's in front of us. That said, an application can also be amended if a new idea comes up through the course of this conversation, I believe. And if they came back with a plan to say, oh, we want to change the parking this way or do something. My guess is that that could always be represented. So I want to, there may be some really good ideas out there that could serve everybody. And we may not be able to address them today because they're not on the plans. So is that kind of accurate? Can an application be amended or can a plan change be presented later?
If this is approved, then that's considered an approval of this document.
Yes.
And so the permit can of course be amended later. And it would require, you know, a new notification process and all that other stuff.
I understand.
And so, so yes, these are, these are living documents. They can be modified later. There is, they just have to go through the process again.
Completely understand that. And they won't, they won't carry that burden of going through the process unless they saw a good enough reward at the other end of that. So, you know, I, I would, so I, I would, I would personally, I'm just looking at this, I would personally have your entrance always be off LaSalle. Now, I know my, my, um, my fellow commissioner here, he might have a different opinion, but I think that that is where your front door is anyways. And if, if that's your main entrance, the, the, um, what it also means is if any cars were queuing up in the street at all, they're off on a side street, not on a main street. So you're not going to have the same problem that you have that we see at In-N-Out Burger. And as good as your food is, I don't think you're going to have that kind of a line anyhow. It's, it's, it's sort of a different beast. I would hope that we can give you the curb cut on Del Monte and that you could cycle through and go that way. And I, I envision that space, that extra eight feet or so that I see on the eastern property line, kind of like car line at school, right? It's, it's car line at school. It's, it's a moving, flowing thing. And you've got somebody out there directing traffic and once everybody knows how it works, fine. And if, if the people at the hotel can't get out because their parking lot's too small, you're moving. That's not where people are parking stationary. I still think some sort of hatching or arrows or lines or directional would be really advisable. But I don't think we as government should tell you how to do it. I think we should just give you license to do it. And, and, and I, I also would be very open to, again, if it was worth it for you to do this down the road, even shifting the track. Even shifting the trash enclosure and creating more lanes at the, at the back of the building where you could have. Queuing space and also loading or whatever else. So those are just some ideas and they're small ideas. It sounds as though condition number nine, we can't change because it's tied to the permitting. I would love to change it. Okay. But you, if you also could justify more parking spaces, I mean, it crosses my mind if that's a one-way parking lot. Why not throw the parking spaces on diagonal? That gives you even more room. I don't know if it, if the counts increase or not. That's something somebody would have to study. But it looks like nine, we have to keep. I have no issue with number 12. We have an intended use. I get that you guys may. Have ideas for community centers and everything else. That's not what this is about, but I would like to see you be able to, to, to grow and expand. Your kitchen operations as much as you possibly can, because that's what this facility is for. Initially, I agree that 13. I would scrap it. Now, you're going to be proud of what you're doing. You're going to tell the city how many meals you do every year. You probably do that on your. Reporting anyways, because you're a transparent organization. On number 10, I have some issues. It says solely for the purpose or. Solely for the preparation and distribution of food to qualifying organizations, families and individuals as operated by Meals on Wheels. And then it says, no other catering, food service or commercial kitchen operations are permitted without a new and amended permit. I agree with the last line about subleasing. Now you shouldn't sublease it, but strikes me as though if you were catering. For some sort of. Charity event that is still related maybe to raising money for Meals on Wheels, we shouldn't be this restrictive. I think it should be operated for Meals on Wheels. And any other catering related to the nonprofit. Operations of the organization. Cause you may, you may decide that we're going to do a Christmas fundraiser and we're going to make cookies for, I, I, I don't know, whatever. You, you guys need to have the, the room to do that. So I think that 10 should be amended. Where it says, no other catering, food services, commercial operations permitted without an amended use permit. I, I think it should be amended to say. That. That that is allowed as long as it is related to the mission of Meals on Wheels.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Based on the first sentence, I'm not sure you even need to do that. Just strike the second sentence.
The second sentence altogether. Okay. I, I struggle with 11. I think 14 is out and. I think 15. It is what it is. And, and I think that 16. It's, you're not, it's not a public retail environment. And I think 16 is awful too, because if all of a sudden all your signs have a big old ugly thing on them that says public, not welcome, that's really uninviting. And 17 is fine.
Well, the thing that strikes me here is I don't recall, and I've been on this commission for a while. Putting such restrictions on other. People that'll come here. This, this, just, I've never seen one with as many conditions as this. And we're, you know, like having to tell. The city how many meals they serve. Well, we're not really concerned with the number of meals. We're concerned with the traffic situation around the building. And meals, meals don't, don't move by themselves. They, you know, it's. I just feel there's a lot of stuff in here that we're putting them to. Standards that we don't hold other. Entities that come here. Use permits.
You had something to say, Commissioner Evans? Okay.
Okay. Well, I think you know my thought on this. I think it's a great use and I'd like to make a motion to approve. Use permit application, UP 2025-004 with the amendment changes that. The commissioners have stated.
So we list those specifically?
Please, or may I, maybe I'll just go down and tell you what I heard and you can tell me if I got this right.
Well, yes, but hold on just a second because I'm, I am, I want to, you have a question?
There's another one that, that probably got missed. It's the second part of number four.
Oh, thank you. Let me look back. Okay. So this is the one where I was saying, I, I understand right now we're approving your commercial commit kitchen and distribution center. So I think if, if you are going to make any kind of. Public gathering spaces, that is a different type of use. And so I, I can live with four, even though it's restrictive on you.
Come beat there, right?
Oh, I, yeah, that, that, yes. Yeah. I think the idea is any, any sort of public gatherings or event space.
Yes.
Yeah. Even if you've got contractors or people you're negotiating, you know, contracts for supply with. Anything that's business oriented or tied to your distribution, that's fine. Yeah.
You're not going to cater a birthday party there or something like that. I think that's the idea that that restriction is. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I agree with the. Come back later if that's what you need, but then we'll be able to see how the parking and all that structure is going. So let's stick with what we've got here. And then. We'll see how, you know, how that goes later in life.
So if I can list the condition amendments that we're talking about, it would be. To strike 13. I'm sorry, let's start it. Sorry, let's strike, let's strike the second sentence of 10. Okay. Let's strike 13. Let's strike 14. And. Strike 16. All right. And I would also, I don't know, can we state this in this is that we. Give our approval, if it matters at all, to the idea of opening a curb cut on Del Monte, subject to public works approving it or whatever? Does it matter? Do you?
You just read it into the record. So if you, if you want to.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, I'm perfectly good with that.
Be the other item.
Yeah.
Okay. So you've made the motion, which I've clarified. We got a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. Congratulations. I do need to read that. An appeal, should there be one, shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of this decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts. And the basis for the appeal, appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. All right. That concludes it. Congratulations, guys. Obviously we're really happy to have you in the city. In time. And I think that Al's designs are going to be a lovely addition as well. All right. So moving to the next item of business, reports from commissioners. So I want to, I want to build on the report that Commissioner Owens made last week about the seagull infestation. I, I went to the cartoons the other day. And I have a classic Mustang convertible and I'm going to get, you know, a stereo. Put in it and he's like, drive it fast, get inside the garage because he, they power wash that, that backyard all the time and it is littered with, with. Bird droppings. Apparently what he explained to me, unless this was what you explained, is there were two. Communities of seagulls that used to be on Lake Elstero and, and the, the barge or something that they lived on were, were eliminated and they all relocated over here. And. The, the guy who runs cartoons was explaining that he's been dealing with his landlord for ages. They put up all kinds of stuff. It doesn't work. They, they put netting up and they were dropped, they were laying their eggs and they were going through the nets and. The eggs were on the roof. A foot or so below the birds and the eggs were all dying. Then the birds that were hatched were falling off and getting run over that the, there are dead birds that got tangled in the nets. I mean, it's, it's horrific. One of the adjacent buildings, the glass company moved out for good because the birds broke through. The skyline and came into their space and were, were destructive to their space. So there's, there's a real problem and I know that, that. The, the Broadway Village is. Is something that the city has spent a lot of time envisioning and it's an important kind of. Future jewel in the crown of the city. But if we are driving away business customers and businesses because we can't contain. An infestation of seagulls. It, it's problematic. And apparently, you know, the guy I was talking to was saying, you know, here's what they have to do. They have to do this and this and this to go to the state and so forth and so on. But I think. I think it's something we need to really look into and addressing. So. Yes, sir.
Yes. And after you told me about the auto center, I, my wife and I walked down. All the way down Del Monte and. Saw that auto centers having the same problem. The, the debris that's on the brand new cars and stuff is horrible. And. Like he says, it's not going anywhere. It's, it's going to get worse and worse and worse. And like he said, I, I have a convertible too, and I stepped out of it and I got nailed. To me, it's like, okay, I can kind of put up with that. I, you know, long residency side. But kind of used to it, but. The new, I can't imagine exotics on Broadway's with the seagulls right now. And you've got million dollar cars sitting there. You know, come on. For the first time in my 70 years on this peninsula, exotics on Broadway's brought Pebble Beach, Carmel, Monterey, Seaside people all together having a great time. Laughing and joking and talking. It was the first time I've ever seen that within the city. The city for so many years when I grew up. Was a dangerous spot as far as everybody was concerned. Well, we're past that and we need to make sure that we protect these things that are coming to the city like exotics on Broadway. And the only way that's going to happen is somehow. We need to get by this and anything that's in too much abundance is a problem. Anywhere on the, on the planet. And. Like you said, when we protect something and they, nothing's preying on them, they just keep. But we definitely need to do something.
The question I think though is what can we do and what about cities? Or that does our coast have the same problem, but have they tried to do?
Monterey, they're rid of them. They came over here.
But then, doesn't Pacific Grove, didn't we talk about this last time? Or didn't they get mentioned that they have a?
They have a hogger now or something.
Why, why can't we not impose that? I mean, they're closer to the ocean, way more stretch line than us. And if anybody was going to be getting nailed prior to us and they're getting, you know, why can't we not implicate what they're implicating there?
Well, or maybe, you know, if, if there was some sort of a barge or something that attracted them at Elstero, you know, maybe we. Create a similar thing over in Laguna Grande where it's over the water and it's not. Where it's hurting our.
But then.
To me, we're just putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage.
No, yeah, I think I.
The matter is there's too many of these things. There needs to be a way that they can move off and go to other oceanfront areas and do their thing. But this massive amount. I'm sorry, I was a fisherman in Monterey Bay and I saw a whole thing happening with. It becoming a sanctuary and not allowing you to do what. Three generations have done before and you don't take it. So. To me, we need to look at this and I know that it's a sanctuary, but there has to be a limit. And we have to take care of the businesses that are in the city. And not to mention coming events. Do you look at that roads? You look at the road on. On Del Monte. It is more white than black asphalt. And that shows us. We need to do something. Don't need to keep parking.
No, no. So I, I mean, I think the point's made and I'm just reiterating what you brought to everybody's attention. It's, it was unfortunate to see that. Any other reports from commissioners? I just want to give an ad away and a thank you for the completed. Little walkway over there by the back entrance to Seaside High School at Monterey Road. It's all done. The barricades are down. It looks dynamite. It's long overdue, but beautiful. Yeah. So.
There is one concern I have. And I don't know if it's sheer that. Bring it up that I figured as a resident and also part of the commission here. Right next to. Domino's Pizza, there's a place there. That constantly having like events and all weekend and big events. And it's causing a big skirt because there's no restrooms and I went to go pick up pizza and the guy was urinating outside. And you know, I, and, and I spoke to somebody here. And they said that that was something that. Is being looked forward to, but we don't have the people to do it because no one works on the weekends. So.
I've been at the Domino's when, when there's, it's like a quinceañera or whatever. There's something's going on. There's a big party. There's always going on.
And, and, and it's not permitted.
Interesting. Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if it's something that we should be looking into. You know, with city, you know, moving. Food and nutrition on weekends, we have at least a Saturday. There's a lot of this going on and.
Or what kind of permit do they have? And does, do they, does the permit allow the uses that are there?
Um, my guess is what's likely happened was going on is that they're doing an event without permits, but if they're doing it on the weekends. Code enforcement isn't working on the weekends. So if this is a recurring every weekend kind of thing, my suggestion would be that. Contact me and we can talk to the building official. That's what code enforcement works for. And then we can talk to him, see if, what the options are.
I think I, I've seen that and I, I'm going to wear this.
That's being part of the, you know. He brought, you know, to the pilot's seagulls.
No, no, no. And when I was there, I don't think, I, when, when I had seen what you're describing. It was noisy. There was music. I, I didn't see the public urination, but there was an issue. You couldn't park to go into Domino's to get, do you think? Cause there was no spaces. So.
Then we're talking about. You know, eliminating these people, these other people who are doing a great thing.
By Broadway, I think.
On parking, right?
It's, it's on, it's on Broadway, right? It's just the first block. Crossroad American Supply.
Okay. But. No, I know your amendments, we can. Yes, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. All right.
You have my contact info, right? Great.
Any reports from staff?
Uh, just FYI, the. Both the ordinance for the firearms and ammunition sales as well as the request for water for Meals on Wheels are going to council on July 17th. Other than that, no, I don't have any reports.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.